Good evening. We're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. You're hereby notified that a special call meeting of the Palaca City Commission has been called to be held on Thursday, August 31st, 2017, at the regular meeting place at City Hall, City Commission Chambers 201, North Second Street, Palaca, Florida, 32177. Meeting is called to commence at 5:00 PM. The purpose of the meeting is to consider the adoption of the annual assessment resolution, fiscal year 2017 fire service assessment. Please govern yourselves accordingly. We're gonna now have our invocation for today's meeting. We're gonna ask Commissioner McCaskill-Williams to lead us in the invocation and also at the plate where we'll stand.
Please pray ahead. Dear heavenly Father, our strength and our Redeemer, thank you for allowing us to come together tonight, gathered in your name. Father, we ask that as we conduct this meeting tonight, you are in all of our decisions and your ways reflecting our actions. We ask the simple blessing in your name, Jesus, your son's name, Jesus Christ, thank you. Amen.
Please, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Hill.
Here.
Vice Mayor Brown.
Mr. Borum.
President.
Commissioner Campbell.
President.
And Commissioner McCaskill is here. All members are present accounted for and you have a floor.
Thank you very much. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes from our July 13th budget meeting?
Motion to approve.
Second. There's a motion on the floor in a second by Vice Mayor Brown. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item one, public recognition and presentations. We won't read the proclamation today. The proclamation will be read tomorrow night at the stadium. But I do wanna take this time to just say a couple words about a very historic event that's gonna go on tomorrow night at Veterans Stadium. The event's gonna kick, the game kicks off at 7:30. At 6:30, we will actually have the dedication services starting. I would encourage everyone to get there a few minutes early. But tomorrow, we're gonna dedicate the field, Bennett-Cooper Field will be dedicated in respect to two great men, Coach Billy Bennett and also Coach Willard Cooper, who's no longer with us. But these two great men are the two coaches during integration when Palaca High School, when Palaca High School was created in Palaca South and Palaca Central were merged together. There were two coaches that coached football. Coach Bennett eventually became the head coach of the football team, but Willard Cooper graciously agreed to become the JV coach. And had it not been for these two men being able to bring two schools together, being able to work together, it oftentimes reminds me of the movie Remember the Titans, but bringing those two together for the sake of football, football was able to bring Palaca together in a way that it had never been together before. From that became the rich history of success and winning, which translated from Bob Lyles to Jim McCool and so forth. But it was the sacrifices of these two men during a very difficult time and really the change, the social change that was promoted between the two of them that's always gonna be memorialized at that field. At the same time, there'll be a dedication of the stadium to the veterans, to the veterans of this community. It's gonna be a great ceremony. This is the brainchild of Ron Dennis, Ben Bates, Jim McCool and others who had an opportunity to work with both of these great men. But it's gonna be a wonderful time in Palaca in its history and so we look forward to that and I just wanna make sure that we invite everyone out to really partake in that celebration. Any comments from the commission, I'd like to, item one A.
Well, I guess, I've been around long enough to know both of those gentlemen and I had kids at school and they really had leadership for our community. They didn't care where the kid was. They got out there and worked with them and instilled in them everything they needed to do. I think that Coach one time was called athletic director. Coach Bennett was the athletic director for a while, so he kinda looked over everything. And he had a terrific staff. They worked really well together and they were asset to our community. And we should be thankful that we had people that were like that, that cared that much about young people and didn't have to, to go out and go that extra mile. Coach Cooper and those with their football team when they had that central, they practiced those guys and sometimes they had to take them home after, some of them lived as far as in Alar and Crescent City. But they didn't care. They practiced them and put our team together. And I think the football, I'm not a football fan, but I think our school teams did really well 'cause we'd go places every once in a while and run into young people that were there in that time, they tell ya, y'all had a heck of a football team. So I think that they were, we need to thank them and I'm sorry Coach Cooper then is not here to hear, but I hope this'll bring some happiness to Coach Bennett and he can hear how people feel about it.
Definitely.
I just think it's a little overdue, I mean, an honor that's long overdue. And it's a good look for our community and the individuals that have stepped up to make that decision. So kudos to them. Tomorrow, Friday night, life is gonna be an amazing, amazing night and I look forward to being there.
Six, seven. So again, let's make sure, let's give a round of applause and recognize both of these great applicants. Moving on to public comment. Public comments will be limited to three minutes. No action will be taken on the items of discussion or to anyone here for public comment. Seeing no one, closed public comment. Moving on to item three of the agenda is the consent agenda. Adopt resolution number 2017 under item A 12-81, authorizing the purchase of Smart Cop, a net motion mobility software by the Palaca Police Department in an amount not to exceed $73,836. B, adopt resolution number 2017 12-82, appointing Keith JR Grimes as interim fire executive, interim fire chief effective immediately per city manager's recommendation. C, adopt resolution number 2017 12-83, removing and eliminating all code enforcement daily fines and liens against 1116 South 12th Street. Code enforcement case number 2012-17, Ditech Financial LLC owner. D, adopt resolution number 2017-12-84, moving all, eliminating all code enforcement daily fines and liens on 2000 Reed Street. Code enforcement case number 2009-99, Rochester Imports Incorporated owner. Are there any items on the consent agenda that you wish to have removed?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you.
Before we can say anything, can we reconsider number B?
Reconsider.
No, we're fine. Question's being called. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. Room Chief. Also, before we move further, Chief Shaw, Captain Newcomer, whoever, would you like to come up and tell us a little bit about the Smart Cop system in 30 seconds or less and what it's gonna do for the police department?
Twenty-three seconds.
Currently, our RMS system of GSA software has been crashing. Smart Cop will give us the ability to run an effective report writing system as well as provide up-to-date statistical data for the community.
Much faster than. It brings you up to the 21st century as it relates to law enforcement data collection, right?
That's correct.
Yes, sir. Great job, thank you.
Can I say one little quick word? Two minutes.
One minute.
Yeah. Cause y'all tell me too and I'm not quiet. We just left that, we asked one from, this month, from our Florida City meetings and I was pleasantly surprised to look up at one of our workshops and find our mayor and our chief of police as speakers. They did an excellent job, they promoted Palaca, they told them how great our police department was and I would like to say thank you to the mayor and to our chief and our police department for what they've done. It ran a tone there in the meeting, people saying, we're going home and try this. So remember, when you're asked to step up, go ahead and do it because we doing great things here, we just haven't been telling people about it. And we down here are people that don't mind working to do it and I'm sure the rest of the commission would like to thank you all for the great job that you all did at that convention.
My kudos goes to the police department under leadership of Chief Shaw, those two captains that are in the back as well as Captain Williams and the young men that wear those blue uniforms as well as the staff that's accompanying them. It made our conversation easy because we were able to just piggyback on what a wonderful community we have and the responses that were in place and the things that are done under that leadership that sits in the back of this room. And so I was really proud to just be able to sit there beside Chief and really talk about really the transformation that's taking place with the police department, its growth and its presence in our community and we definitely appreciate that and I was definitely proud to be there. Moving on to item number four of the agenda is our public hearing and resolution, our annual fire assessment. Item A is public hearing and unadmirable fire assessment fiscal year 1718.
A resolution of the city of, commission of the city of Palaca, Florida approving the fiscal year 2017-18 non-admirable assessment role for fire protection services, facilities and programs, addressing the collection of an amount equivalent to unpaid fire service assessments if any, directing certification of the assessment role and collecting pursuant to the Uniform Assessment Collection Act, confirming required statutory notice and imposing and levying fire service assessments, providing directions and providing an effective date.
Second. So motion on the floor in a second, is there anyone here for public hearing?
Yes.
I've got, I've got you, I got you.
This kitchen called and she sent a thing and she wanted it read until I woke up.
If she didn't send it in, it won't be read in a minute.
I have it, make her press it.
She sent it, she sent it.
If Commissioner Williams wants to read it into the minute, it'll go in a minute. But we're not, we don't poke by proxy, we don't speak by proxy here. I've got one card, Ms. Francis, I can't make up your last name.
Gerst.
Gerst.
E-R-S-T.
Okay, Ms. Francis Gerst, would you please come forward at this time?
I'm here to oppose the.
State your name.
Francis Gerst, I live at 627 Emmett Street, Southern Historic District of Palaca, 32177. I haven't lived there a long period of time, but certainly I've lived there long enough to see a few horrendous things on in our districts. I'm here in regard to the assessment that's based on, I guess, every person in the city. I believe that it's supposed to be used for the fire district and for the fire rescue unit in order to train them, regulate them, give them a better means by which to fight fire. I don't know how that's happening. I have more questions than I have statements. I have done some work related to the past of the city and my one question is, how in the world do you assess people for fire attacks when there is nothing to put the fire out with? And what I mean by that is, the fire hydrants have no water, or at least some of the time they don't. I've followed seven, actually eight fires that have gone on in the city in different sectors, a lot of them in historic districts actually. If the firemen got there, they performed, they had all of their equipment ready and there's no water, no water to put the fire out with. So they're standing there like, you know, what do we do now? Do we run down to the river? How do you eliminate that type of thing? People tell me there's gonna be water, you know, it's been 20 years in the making. By the way, I do have history related to these statements, not only in the newspaper but actually occurrences, fire logs. So I'm not speaking out of my head. How do you assess somebody when there's nothing to put fires out on, when houses have burned to the ground with fire personnel waiting for the water to be turned on or waiting to come out of the hydrants? I might also add that I've gone up here to City Hall and asked those particular questions twice. And what I've been told was that we provide the fire hydrants, the water is a courtesy. Let me extend to you exactly what courtesy means and perhaps somebody, anybody could tell me how that fits into not being able to put out a fire. You've got all these gentlemen here, everybody doing their job, but without something to do it with, what are they gonna do? I don't see that a fire assessment can possibly be instigated, not even instigated, put on the board or made to be taxed when there's no fire dissolving, what would you say, providing these gentlemen with the way to, the means to put out fires.
Ten seconds.
Well, we all know what courtesy is actually, maybe not. Courtesy actually is in general terms, fuse.
Time's up, I'm gonna extend the courtesy and let you finish.
No, it's okay. We all know what courtesy means, it has nothing to do with water and the fire hydrants though.
Anyone else here for public comment, public hearing? Seeing no one to a closed public hearing. Is there any further discussion?
Last question.
Question's called. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item B, annual assessment resolution for fire service assessment fiscal year 1718 based on same rates and exempt property direction by city commission fiscal year 15.
That was the presentation. If you just read it. I read the title. Yeah, A was opening the hearing and B was presentation.
Okay. All right, all the items have been taken care of as it relates to the resolution. We're moving the agenda forward, wanna make sure we recognize Mr. Mark Lawson is in the audience at this time. He's our consultant as it relates to our fire assessment. We wanna move on to the next resolution on item five, authorized execution of master engineering contract extension with Paso Row Associates Airport Engineers. Adopt.
A resolution of the city of Palaca, Florida authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute the test of extension of master consulting services agreement in Paso Row Associates LLC Airport Consulting Engineers through March 31, 2018.
Second. Motion on the floor in a second by Commissioner Borum. Not on the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no, seeing no one to a closed public hearing. Mr. Holmes?
Yeah.
Any comments from the board?
I'd like to hear some, um, done, done around the modification.
The modification you're talking about on the master engineering contract?
Yes, sir.
Modification is primarily to accomplish two goals. First, the original contract or the contract that presently have by its terms expired and provided for two one-year extensions or additional extensions as might be agreed upon by the parties. This document would accomplish that extension to get us through the March timeframe. We have several projects that are underway that Paso Row is involved in, this would go ahead and get us through those timeframes or those projects and then it's my understanding that it's the intent to go ahead and issue another RFQ because it's been a few years since we had the RFQ, do another RFQ and maybe Paso Row gets selected again, who knows? But we would at least open that process up after we get through the projects that are already in play. And the second goal of the agreement that's in front of you is to eliminate a clause that's in the current contract that essentially absolves Paso Row of any liability for anything they do. It's come to my attention that it had been implemented in a different municipality and the end result was that the municipality was held not to have the ability to take action against Paso Row even if Paso Row committed an error or even if they were alleged or admitted to have committed an error. So I compared the contract from another municipality. A friend of mine happened to be representing that municipality and I compared the contract that they had with our contract and found the same clause in it and I didn't want that same clause to bite us at some point in the future, it hasn't to this point. So we met with Mr. Halesco and advised him that we, you know, would consider extending through the March timeframe upon the condition that that clause be removed. And so he, and he really, at least he did at that time and I understand that in conversations since he's also. So he would accomplish two purposes and I think both purposes are worthwhile and then in the March timeframe, I, my understanding, yes, wanna go back out for RFQs and consider the process all over again.
Sir, appreciate it, thanks.
If we can help the question.
Sure can.
Yes.
Please.
Question's called. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Item number six on the agenda is resignation of city manager Kerry K. Suggs. I'll address this issue. Mr. Suggs has an opportunity to become the next county manager. He's, his contract was accepted on last Tuesday and I think it creates an excellent opportunity for us to further relationships with the county commission as a whole and to really get this community continually moving forward. We're excited about the future for Mr. Suggs and we're also excited about our future with the city. We think that so as Palaca goes, so as this county goes, being the county seat and we look forward to really moving forward. I think we've operated within concept with the commission, working closely with the very key members of our team to make sure that succession plans are in place. We find ourselves in a very different position than we were two short years ago, two and a half years ago, but we're in a, we're in a position where we're healthier financially, we're in a position where our leaders have been groomed to step in and, you know, for that, my suggestion to the commission is that we, in acceptance of Mr. Suggs' resignation, that we appoint our finance director, Matt Reynolds, as our interim city manager. Second. Don't wanna think about it? No.
No. No reason not to. Yeah. The resolution to appoint an interim and names Matt.
And so, first of all, let's go ahead and we will move, we will, we'll, let's have a motion to accept the resignation of Mr. Suggs. Motion to accept the resignation of Mr. Suggs. Second. Motion in the second on the floor, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Now, we, at this point, we will look at Mr. Reynolds again. If you wanna take any more time to reconsider, let me know.
Can we take a five-minute break?
Sir, Commissioner Borum, if you wanna restate your motion.
I'd like to make a motion, accept Matt Reynolds as the interim manager, city manager for senior Palaca.
Second. There's a motion in the second for the second time. Any further discussion seems like it's not needed. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. We'll now move on to administrative reports. Mr. Reynolds, congratulations.
Congratulations. I'm gonna send you a donut card. You got five of us now.
So, no, I think this is just exactly what we're looking for, we're looking for opportunities. Mr. Reynolds is more than capable of being able to step in in the absence of a city manager and with the team that we've assembled over the course of the last few years, we'll continue to write the course. And we're very proud of Mr. Suggs and his opportunities that he has before us. Administrative reports, we'll be out of here in 30 minutes. Stucker.
I'm all good.
Oh, we don't. Chief.
Sir, I'm sorry, I'm with the board.
Room Chief. Starting early, right?
No, we had a passable fireman today, so I'd like, while they're here, to congratulate them on their hard work. The first week of school, I think it was the first day of school, they handed out 150 backpacks to children, to kindergarten classes on the first day. I'd like to commend them while they're here. Also, they put the roof on the concession stand at Forrester Field two Saturdays ago as a city service project, so while they're all here, I'd like to thank them for all they've done.
I'd like the fire department to stand up since you're in here and I want you to turn around and look at the police department and publicly challenge them to do what you've been doing in this community as far as the Texas, as far as helping out with those parks. In all seriousness, guys, we appreciate the things that you do. We definitely, we know that your job is a very risky job, you know, you gotta stay very seriously working with our youth in this community and volunteering and we definitely thank you for the work that you do and we recognize your presence and we applaud you.
If they want to know the project, my house caught fire in April.
See the guy in the back with the half moon?
There's a lot of half moons.
So, but again, we definitely thank you guys. Mr. Yul.
Mr. Griffin. Just real quick, we broke ground on Stormwater Project on the north side of town and we're getting ready to break ground on the potable line replacement project phase one and we also broke ground on the riverfront redevelopment streetscaping project.
Do it one more time for the camera.
One more time for the camera, yes, sir. Again, we broke ground on the stormwater, regional stormwater fund that's being constructed at Booker Park and the associated recreation improvements. We broke ground on the streetscaping project that will happen on Memorial Parkway, Short Laurel and Second Street and we're getting ready to break ground on the potable line replacement project phase one, which will occur in the North Historic Tiff District and come through the Central Tiff District and we hope to start phase two at the beginning of fiscal year.
So how long before the ship's door opens?
The contractor has until 2018, but contractor is making great progress and we're optimistic it'll be open soon.
The roof is up, the drywall's up and the painters are getting started. Part of the clarification, you say 2018, when in 2018?
Sir, I've got so much going on right now, I don't wanna give you the wrong date, but I know it's about two months in that they have within their contract. I believe it's sometime in February that they have to be completed. I can get the real date if you want. I just don't want it to be, you know, 2013 is 12 months long, so.
I mean, 2018 is, it's, I can tell you, they're working fast over there. Great job, man.
Great job, great job.
I walked through the day, they're working fast.
And it looks good to me.
Is he, is he getting any sleep?
Travis.
Not this meeting anyway.
Ms. Figgers.
There's an email that I distributed asking for a representative of the commission to bring greetings to an event that's happening at the Crystal Church Saturday night and if anyone could please get back with me and let me know that they are able to attend because I have been sworn to call this, so I'll play you back tomorrow.
I'm unavailable.
Pardon me?
I'm unavailable.
And if anyone could please get back with me and let me know that they are able to attend because I have been sworn to call this, so I'll play you back tomorrow.
I'm on the radio.
Pardon me?
I'm on the radio.
Okay. Anybody else?
I'll be late.
We'll work through that shortly.
I'll get this if I can, but right now.
We'll work through it after the meeting. Mr. Hollis.
Nothing.
Mr. Reynolds.
Well, I just wanted to thank the commission for giving me the opportunity to step up. I really appreciate that. But also wanted to publicly thank Mr. Suggs for the little over two years that I've been able to work with him. I've really enjoyed working with him and I'm really gonna miss him, but just wanted to take the opportunity to publicly thank him. He couldn't be here tonight, but just wanted to make sure that was, that was said. It's been a busy week, had the auditors down here at City Hall, normal auditors for the past four days. So it's been a little busy. Thank goodness Deborah's back from her conference. So, that's about all I have.
Appreciate it. And it feels good to have you sitting up front this time. Commissioner Borum.
No comments today. I'd like to welcome Matt in his new role, wish him much success. Same with Chief Grimes, I mean, Chief Grimes in his new role. I could thank these young men for stepping up, learning all they need to learn and be in position to take the challenge. Or anything, anything I can help you with, just let me know.
Commissioner McCaskill.
Not much, just to piggyback, piggyback off Commissioner Borum, welcome aboard.
Thank you again. Chief Grimes is always at my call. And to the police department, I've already asked the fire department to help me with the project at the school. You're more than welcome to tag on when it comes down to it. Matt, Mr. Reynolds is always there for when we need him, so I'm excited about this opportunity to grow. Kudos to Mayor Hill for the call of the town hall meeting that transpired on the other day. Nothing but great things came as a result of it. And I'm looking forward to continued partnerships with individuals that were there to make sure that this community continues to be the reflection of what we would like to see in the world. We started here at home and I do believe from that night, a lot of individuals went in there expecting one thing but left with a wealth of knowledge that will continue to let this community move forward. So again, kudos to Mayor Hill for taking and stepping up to the bat to make that happen. Of course, we went to the Florida League of Cities, great things happened at the Florida League of Cities. Have the ability to now serve as the secretary for the, for the Black Caucus of elected officials. And we're just looking forward to doing, continue doing great things with the Florida League of Cities in general.
The regional director file.
Well, he might wanna tell it itself.
You said it yourself. You'd like to tell them, y'all.
Before he gets started, I'd like to give him a round of applause before he did the night, the town hall. And again, like, like, and he mentioned it, he mentioned it in the town hall where you got a lot of times where people, you'll feel the room when, sometimes when you think, when, you'll feel the room when most of the time you think things are gonna be in a very bad or a negative way, but then when there's things that need to be truly assessed, the rooms are very bad. Like when we had the, the crime forum, what I had, when I called the town hall for the crime forum, the room, like he said, was only like fifteen people in the room when we had crime during those times. But when we have things that people think that a memorial gonna be moved, we had the whole town and the, and the room was packed. So again, we'd like to thank him for all he has done and continue to do for our community, keep it moving forward. And again, we just wanna continue to do great things for the city.
I'd neglect to add, I wanna welcome onto the team, Ms. Calissa Moose. She's one of the individuals that run around and make sure, the smell that you smell in here tonight, it came from Ms. Calissa Moose. So she's one of the hardest working women to come onto the city. So thank you for all that you've taken on. We know that it's not an easy task, but we greatly appreciate you and your services. Thank you.
Mayor Brown, go ahead and tell the story.
I got a couple other things that I left y'all.
You can tell the story to them.
Well, um, right now, right now, I wanna tell you that the boat is doing its job. This, yesterday, they had the regional planning council come and bring a group of people here. One of the people were from EDA and I sure, I told them, we gotta get to know you better 'cause we don't want fines and nothing, we want good stuff. And they had a cross section of people there, water management, I don't know, all of the, can't remember all of the people there, but they were from different departments all over the state. And the good thing, I gave them greetings from all of us 'cause I told them I was only one, they didn't have a regular job, y'all hadn't eaten, my children feed me. So they, I greeted them and told them to come back again, bring a group with them and bring their wallets and we'll give them a tour of the city. And I even lock them in my, put my child with bringing locks on, so I make sure we get everything over to them before they leave. I think that it's beginning to pick up and our tourism thing, people are beginning to know about us and they'll be bringing other groups, they really like the boat ride down the river. And they liked our center, they're really taken by the center that we have over there. I think they had lunch there yesterday. The other thing, I, I don't want you all to think I'm playing cookie, but our next meeting, I will not be here. My reason for not being here is I've been asked by Senator Nelson to participate in a summit for rural economic development in Washington that week. And I will be going to it and trying to see how much we can find out and how much help we can get to bring back to Palaca. If some of you have, if on the commission, you want me to make sure and emphasize, make sure you tell me, we'll be leaving on the tenth.
Let's tell the story. Tell the story, historian.
Oh, he wants me to tell. I, I, they, they have me to be the historian on the Florida Black Caucus. And I think it's because I've been here so long.
Florida League of Cities meeting for the City of Palaca, first and foremost, was a very good time for our community. The commission as a whole represented very well. Our attendance was one hundred percent. We have three members take on board positions. We've got a couple members who actually have a position on policy boards and executive boards within the Florida League of Cities. So the representation is there all the way around. Hopefully in the next month, have a board position for league mayors. But we've, we've created relationships all throughout the state of Florida. When you say Palaca, of course, the first thing that they say is Mary Lawson Brown. She was the creator of Florida League of Cities outside of the city. But she is truly one of the matriarchs of that, of the organization. But we are, we're excited. The state is recognizing the leadership within our commission and Palaca is, is present. We've been invited to several panels throughout the country and throughout the state. And so it's picking up for our community. We've cultivated relationships which allow us to be in the perfect position to receive additional funding, to receive additional partnerships, and really just to have greater relationships. Outside of that, I'm excited about baseball coming at our fields. You know, it goes right in line with what happened with the fire department forced the field, the mission work that took place a few months ago. But the fields are shaping up. We are getting ready to kick off an exhibition league. We've got to reintroduce our kids to baseball in the inner city. And so there's a great opportunity within this community for, for baseball, softball, and T-ball to become, again, what it was in my day. And of course, I was the best player in the league. But it's, it's, we're getting back to the point where relationships are being cultivated. The one thing that I got from baseball is the same thing that we saw Monday night with our forum. Palaca was a close-knit community of people from different walks of life who had an opportunity to be adversaries on the field and play against each other and give it their all. And they also had an opportunity to be teammates and friends and close. The advent of gangs, the advent of different social circles didn't necessarily happen in the same manner because people were side by side, parents from, from the north side and the south side, and Reese Palac and San Mateo and all over this community worked together. I wanna give a special shout-out to Facebook for putting up the wrong information because it allowed so many more people to come to the forum the other night. It allowed people to come in with the mindset that one thing was happening. And what we found was that there was a conversation about unity. It wasn't a conversation about divisiveness, it was about historical harms. And out of that conversation, you could see the temperament change in a matter of minutes. You saw people go from coming there and being angry. You saw other people who were there who had hurt feelings and we saw some folks share their, their experiences and some hurt that happened fifty-five years ago when they were little kids, during segregation. But we also saw compromise and empathy come out of that meeting. But the peak of that meeting happened when we started talking about Central Academy and we started talking about the way people felt and that it wasn't one person's neighborhood, it was our, it was all of our neighborhood. And as a result, seventy-six people that were in that room that night signed up to be a part of the solution. Many more have called in to City Hall and sent emails or even Facebook messages saying that they wanted to be a part of what was going on. And that's what this community is all about. It's not the negative that we see all the time in the newspaper. It's not the, it's not the fake news, for lack of a better term, that so many other people put out there as it relates to some of the things that we see on social media. It's what Palaca is, the gem of the St. John's River. It's a melting pot of people from different walks of life, from different social circles, from different socioeconomic backgrounds. Hard-working Florida people. This is the last true snapshot of old Florida. And we have to be proud of it. We've gotta continually rewrite our story. We've got to share the work of young men like the fire department and Chief Shaw and Mr. Griffin, and even the ascensions of young folks like Matt Reynolds or J.R. Grine because that's what Palaca's about. And we had an opportunity to do something that many places around the country didn't do, that was to bring folks together from Southern Heritage to Black Lives Matter to just Palaca folks. And we came together in love, in unity. We left out with prayer and hope. And that's what this is all about. And so I'm excited about having the opportunity, been blessed with the ability, to really step out on faith and watch this community continually grow. People say there's not a race problem in Palaca. There was a communication problem in Palaca. And the problem was we hadn't talked about the things that are difficult to speak of. But we did on Monday and it won't take, it'll take more than a two-hour conversation to make some things a reality. But it started with that two-hour conversation and it's gonna continue on. And so I'm excited about that. Lastly, I wanna put in your minds, as we get ready to approve our final budget in the next couple of weeks, for us to look at an opportunity to hire someone to do public relations for the city. You know, all too many times we go out and we do cozy ourselves from the, whether it's, whether it's Ms. Driggers on her Facebook page.
On the city website.
You know, doing things personally, informing people of whatever project we may have, or it's, or it's commissioners advertising certain events, or it's people just putting stuff out that's going on in the city. But we've gotta start to look at ways in which we can actually start to promote this community in a greater light, to get more hits on the positive things that we're doing as opposed to some of the negative aspects that are reported in the media across other communities. And so we need to consider, at least place an item in the budget, which allows us to be to hire somebody to do some additional public relations because it's time for us to write our story as opposed to reacting to other stories. And that's where we are. Those are my comments. I'm past everybody's three minutes and I'll take that liberty today. And if there's nothing else, your journey.